We will observe a moment of reflection as we always do. And being Valentine's week, you may want to reflect on those that you love and you've lost, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I would like to ask Councilman Sam Bishop if he would lead us in the pledge.
My pleasure. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any adjustments to the agenda for tonight? Hearing none. I will open the floor for public hearings. We have four tonight. First one being a conditional use permit request by Shaw Development LLC for residential development to consist of multiple family dwellings at a density of development not to exceed 20 dwelling units per acre on an approximately 5.7 acre property located at 2,000 Sunset Drive Northeast. Tax map number is 436-A-22A and 436-A-42 in the B3 General Business District. Anyone here to address this issue?
Can I say right off the bat, Mr. Mayor, that I'd like to abstain from this one because the company I work for is involved with this.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to discuss this matter?
Good evening, Mayor. Council members. My name is Tom Rutledge. I'm a project manager with Shaw Development and I'm here tonight to ask for the conditional use permit to be issued for this piece of property. This is adjacent, this property is adjacent to the Wheaton community across from Sheetz. It currently has a single residential house on the site. We went through planning commission and worked with the adjacent neighbors to the south. She had, there's an existing driveway there near building number one that we'd liked to have had removed. We put some vegetative buffers in there. We had a few comments from some of the residents of the single-family, or I guess the duplex units right there in Wheaton. There was some concern about degrading, cutting down on the hill, fencing. We've proffered some fencing to be replays and also some overgrading, vegetative screening along there. As you can see, at 20 units an acre, you know, we're a little bit less than that. We're about 16 or 18 units per acre. We just didn't feel like the maximum of 20 fit good with the topography and everything else on the site. We've got open recreation areas to the east and to the west. We've got a trail network connecting all the sidewalks within. So we've tried to create a little community right there. Like I say, it's less than six acres. The apartment units themselves are proposed are similar to the ones that were approved and actually under construction behind the mall right now. And they are three-bedroom units. They're four units per floor, three floors, and there's 12 units per building. Water and sewer is fine. We've looked at staff and the planning commission asked us to look at the traffic. The traffic was fine. We're below any thresholds for any traffic impact analysis. We've also shown in the middle, we've got about 20 garages that are being available for lease as well, and they're in the center of the site itself. Other than that, planning commission, there were, I believe, four conditions associated with the approval. And that was the four-foot fence on the northern property line adjacent to Commonwealth. Vegetative screening along the northern property line adjacent to Commonwealth. Line of Wheaton cypresses that I talked about being proffered down next to building number one, there's screening for the only residential house that's still left. And then everything, there's one little pie of piece of land to the south of us and then you join the beat up right of way. And the same, the driveway will be removed for the residents there too, so she doesn't have the traffic right there right behind her house. Planning commission's recommendation was five to zero that night. There were a couple of people absent in Council Collins' statement.
Mr. Rutledge, you made a statement that I didn't, I'd like you to ask you to repeat. You made a comparison between this proposal and the development behind the Bellas of Pepper's Ferry. What was your comparison? You said these are...
The buildings themselves.
They're very similar?
Yes.
Okay.
Similar to size. To size and I'm not going to say the exterior facade, but we do like that. But we don't actually have the building's design involved unless we were granted the CUP.
Okay, so you were saying they're very similar in scale?
Yes.
And so forth to those?
Yes.
Well, those are very attractive. Hopefully yours will be, if you're successful, hopefully these will be attractive as well.
I agree. I think they've done a great job. They really do.
Thank you.
Tom, the ingress and egress will be off of Franklin Street at the stoplight?
That's correct.
Is that the only way in and out?
Yes. And I did want to point out that I forget the entity, but basically Roger Williams, the property behind us, between us and the bypass and around Wheaton, and of course over behind those that came over, that was approved for a similar CUP request, I think back in 2012 by Mega Builders. So our density is just a shade over what was approved on the adjacent property. Our requested density is just a shade over what was approved on the adjacent property.
When they did the, oh, when they, they had a chance to talk to the people in the area to tell them what they were doing. Have you had that chance?
No, we did not. It was advertised, of course, the town advertised it for the public hearing, and the people that come out, one resident from Commonwealth and then the family to the south of us right there. So we worked with it, worked with them. I assured the gentleman from Commonwealth, his name slips me out of memory, I apologize that, you know, we would be to abide by any and all of the laws concerning erosion set in control, stormwater, and of course, building damage.
Now, as I recall back, what type of clientele do you think you're going to have? It was somewhat of worry that that road was going to have so much traffic that it would not be able to handle it.
The trip generations will, were very little additional traffic.
Steve, I'll answer that question if you don't mind. It might even help you out here. The big trip generations were related to the potential to develop Mr. Woody's property back here. There's been talk about very large-scale apartment units. I can't, I don't know if it's appropriate for me to mention some of the commercial developments I've heard, but I think that the big trip generations were related to discussion about the larger property back behind there ultimately. But this will generate trips, not to take anything away from that. But there have been discussions in the past and they were related to what some very large-scale development might hold. But this will, that's always been the focus of the major trip generation, but this is going to generate trips, for sure.
Yeah, this is, I believe, 84 bedrooms as opposed to the Mega Builders' proposal with 615 bedrooms.
Right. Okay, that helps with the scale, yeah, the scale.
I know, I can ask you a question, you can't go and answer it, but is this set up for a graduate students or retired or all, is it all the above?
You know, we're finding out that there's a lot of people that, a lot of people come to Blacksburg, Chris Burgary, went to Virginia Tech, never left. So, you know, they're students, their kids are here now, they want to bring their parents in. What we're looking at right now is something we're not seeing a lot in the area, that we're going to make the bottom floors ADA handicap accessible. So that really opens us up for a lot. We've talked about some of the ground floor units being two master bedrooms, husband and wife, retirees, empty nesters scaling down.
Singles, singles again, yeah. And the millennials aren't buying things like they, like we did. I'm not a millennial, but they're not, they're not buying things like we did.
That's right.
They're wanting, they're wanting to be, you know, there's a demand, the NRV Living Study did that, and probably, this is a little out of scale, but it really drives home the point. That Huckleberry Ridge or whatever up there also?
View.
It is, but who would have thought that they fill up those places and there's a demand for this very type of product, and we're seeing it.
And they're still building up on Huckleberry Ridge.
Yeah, just started another fact.
It's unfathomable. You've never, just to drive up there, if you've never been there, you would never believe there's that many people back there living.
That's right.
And they're, and they're, as of last year, the golf tournament I played at, they're like 98% occupied.
Right. And, excuse me, I said 84. This is, this is eight buildings, 12 units each, 96.
96.
Sorry.
So about one-sixth of what the other was.
One-sixth, right.
And you're probably going to do one building at a time?
I don't think so. I think we would just go on in there and just knock it down. It would be the goal.
And you all would own and operate it?
That's our intention.
Or your group is?
Yes. It'll be our first apartment complex, and I think, I don't know, we'll let you know. I think y'all will be seeing the more and more of these requests. It's just a different housing option, but Christiansburg really doesn't have much of it right now. We've got the hill and some of the older units.
And these are, these are going to be for rent?
That's correct.
About $1,200 a month?
Every minute.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Rutledge. Is there anyone else here that would like to address this, this issue? Hearing none, we will move on to a conditional use permit request by Michael Abraham, agent for Threshold Center LLC for a private recreational facility, a gym, at 225 Industrial Drive Northeast. Tax map numbers 500-A-5K, 5K1 in the I2 General Industrial District. Anyone here to address this issue? Hearing none, we'll close this portion of the, that public hearing. Ordinance to amend Chapter 18 Finance and Taxation, Article 8 Transit Lodging in regards to homestay uses. Mr. Wingfield, Mr. Warren, whomever is...
I'll help you.
Okay.
Good evening. So as you know, the zoning changes for homestay uses did pass Council January 42. The companion piece to that is a potential change to the ordinance for finance and taxation. So this is a public hearing this evening that would allow the town to apply the 9% transient lodging tax to the homestay use. It would, another change would be it replaces the term hotel. We have a specific term hotel which includes all transient lodging. Really encompasses all types of facilities of transient lodging. So we would change the term there to make it clear that we're really intending to identify all transient lodging facilities in this ordinance. There are some outdated terms that would be eliminated by the ordinance as well, like full story and tourist home. There's also a mis, a sentence that does not read correctly, so we wanted to, to make sure that it was, it was clear by changing or replacing a lie with the two in the sentence to make it clear that transits do, you know, pay the taxes, not give them to them. So that is the, that is the change there. It would also require homestay uses to register with the finance department. This is laid out in the state code that changed two years ago, and copy was also provided in your packets. And it also does, also references the section requiring a business license as similar to home occupations would, so it ties in the, the homestay with the business license requirement as with similar, similar permits. The question is still, it's out there. Currently, the ordinance does require homestays to report monthly for the taxes that would be remitted to the tenant. This, this could be changed if council does, would want to entertain that change. It, it could be to quarterly or to something else. Staff has prepared language if council would like to pursue changing reporting with our into quarterly. And so we're prepared with language this evening. I will note that, you know, quarterly reporting would provide convenience for homestay hosts and that they would not have to report each month, with noting that some homestay hosts do not host each month. And so, so it would allow for, for less reporting in a given year. It would be difficult to track from a finance department standpoint with our given software system. So, so there is, there is some difficulty there.
Say that again.
It would be difficult to track.
Reporting quarterly, for quarterly, it would be difficult?
Yes, yes. And this treaty may be able to provide, you know, additional details on that, but it basically, because our system is set up to receive monthly, so it's, to receive the quarterly, and having to put that into the system, it would be very difficult to do from a, from an administrative standpoint. There may be systems in the future that, you know, if we were able to, software system that could accommodate those types of things.
That's, that's the future, but Val's been very consistent with her message that monthly reporting is the preferred way to do it.
And it can be digital? Can they submit digital reports?
Currently, no, it would be, it would be a paper.
Send them by email.
It could be.
Scan them and send them by email or drop them.
Facts. This is basically a form, basically one-page form. One thing, you could have the form basically pre-prepared with your name, your address, everything for your, your home state, and simply pencil in a zero for your monthly remittance.
Yeah.
And sign it and date it. If you want, you know, if you had copies of it available, or if you had it in, say, a scan on the computer. So simply having, you know, basically you'd be looking at putting, like I say, a zero for your monthly and then signing and dating if you had no remittance.
Yeah, and Ms. Saxon and I would be sending those, but if we're doing this, then I wouldn't want to be anyone burdensome that it hasn't been.
One thing I'll point out too, Lisa Bleakley does like tracking lodging tax clutch in monthly, and if they're reporting only on a quarterly basis, then if you aren't getting a monthly breakdown, that could be a little bit of a problem for her.
Okay. Okay, keep going.
So there were language to be added. It's a little hard to read, but the area, the sections that are underlined, it would be recommended to be added in order to allow for quarterly reporting and for homestay uses only. And then there would need to be some language added to the discount section, which is the 3% of the taxes that are remitted for any transient lodging facility that remits on time. If you wanted to continue that for homestay uses that report quarterly, then we need to add some language to that section as well. So I just wanted to provide that language if that is an avenue that you all would like to pursue.
But as it sits right now, it's monthly?
It is monthly.
Okay. Thanks. That's all for me.
And that's really all comments I have.
All right. Is anyone else, is anyone here to address this issue? Yes, sir?
My name is Deborah Niner with Tulsa Financial Company here. This is an Airbnb host, I'd just like to comment that the monthly reporting has a benefit of providing timely data in terms of use of the property. The monthly report requires that we say how many nights a house has been used, how many guests, and provide detailed information. If we provide quarterly, quarterly reporting, and there's quite a delay if there's some need for that data by, for example, a neighbor. And so I'm in support of monthly reporting. We do have to provide monthly reporting right now to the state for tax purposes, and it will be on the same schedule. For those months where there's zero income, the state still requires a zero income report. They do offer to put you onto a quarterly schedule after you've only had a hundred-dollar tax obligation per month for the 12 months previous. However, the state doesn't do that. They still leave you on a monthly schedule. So I believe that would not be too burdensome to the hosts to do that.
Thank you, Deborah. Anyone else here to discuss? Hearing none, ordinance to amend Chapter 26 Public Safety in Enacting Article IV Special Events and Other Outdoor Assemblies. Captain Ramsey?
Yes, sir.
Mojo Ramsey, I'm sorry.
Mr. Ramsey, yeah.
Didn't mean to demote you there.
Makes you nervous. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and your counsel. I'm here to briefly address the ordinance to codify our current special events policy and add some policy for picketing and demonstrations as well. The proposed ordinance will create processes and standards to use in governing the use of public property and balance the town and the community's desire to have special events and other outdoor activities in public spaces with the need to ensure that that can be done safely and provide for the desires of the community. It's intended to protect the rights of the people and groups and organize and display in peaceful assemblies and express their political and social, religious and other views in the public spaces within the town of Christiansburg, subject to reasonable time and place restrictions. The rules and regulations in the proposed ordinance are specifically tailored and intended to be applied without regard to the content of the message or speech that would be given in, in these meetings. To summarize briefly, the new article, it would add a new article to the town code entitled Special Events and Other Outdoor Activities, and it consists primarily of two sections. The first deals with special events such as parades, festivals, 5Ks, runs, just community events that we already have. We already have procedures to deal with this, but it's never been listed in town code. So what this would do is codify the procedures that have already been in place for several years. There are very little change to anything dealing with special events, parades and that type of thing. It does draw distinctions between the types of assemblies. And then the second section of the ordinance deals specifically with picketing and demonstration, lays out the processes that event organizers would need to follow and the standards for different sized events, the timeframes required for notice, and the conduct that would be allowed and conduct that would be prohibited. The picketing and demonstration section adds a definition of what picketers or demonstrators would be under the code, persons participating, individuals or any action promoting or objecting to a policy on those portions of public ways not used primarily for vehicular parking, moving traffic, or otherwise not constituting a parade. And there are some specific size requirements within the proposed ordinance. Groups of less than 10 would not be required to get a permit, so the smaller groups or demonstrations would not have to go through the permit process. We, it does allow for notice to the town staff and the chief of police, but it doesn't require written notice for that size. Groups between 10 and 24 persons are required to give written notice, but again, they don't give, they don't have to obtain a permit under the process, so there would be no fee for those demonstrations. Groups larger than 25 requires actually going through the permit process, and there is a minimal fee associated with that. When I say minimal, it's $25. It gives, the reason for that is groups of that size would require more significant planning and potentially allocation of resources, so the staff would need time to organize and decide what we need to do, basically make sure that can be done safely. It does provide for exceptions for demonstrations that occur spontaneously in response to newsworthy events or community events that happen on short notice. The timeframes require the person, if you're required to apply for a permit, you would have to do so no less than 45 days prior to the event, no more than six months from prior to the event. But if it is a spontaneous event that happens in the news and people want to hold a vigil or have a demonstration, then there are provisions to allow the town manager to grant an exception to that process. Similarly, it allows for waiver fees and insurance requirements with an exception that insurance would be required for food production. We still have to do that if anything. The ordinance would spell out the type of conduct that would not be allowed in any event or protest, and that conduct is, is designed to ensure the safety of the participants and the community, to safeguard everyone and to minimize the impact on everyone involved, so the community can function around the event and the event can still happen and have its voice and be seen, heard, and get their message out. The ordinance also states the authority of the police to disperse the crowds if needed. That as, as has been previously discussed, the penalty for violation of this ordinance is a Class III misdemeanor. So violating a term of the permit requirement is a summonable offense. And just for sake of clarity, our intention is not to charge people for violating this ordinance unless it, unless all options have been exhausted, and it still would issue an argument that's happening peacefully, but also maybe a technical violation of the permit process. We would give them opportunity to comply. If it came to lower citation, we would do that, but events would be allowed to continue as long as they were not unlawful, not threatening people or property, causing significant harm. This came about just to help us prepare more for the events, and we do have large-scale protester events in the future. To date, we've, you know, we've been very fortunate not to deal with anything like that. Our assemblies have all been peaceful and there's no reason to think otherwise. This just gives us a better framework to plan for future events.
I think that was pretty much what we covered in our work session the other night. Any new questions come up from council? Any questions?
Would you explain to the folks here about how you work at Blacksburg with their rules and our rules?
Oh, yes, sir. One of the things that we set out to do in drafting this was to recognize that the Newer Valley is a very close-knit community, and we work together on a large number of things. And the community is not typically recognized your traditional boundaries. So we felt like it was really important to have ordinances that mirrored what our neighbors were doing. So we've modeled this after the ordinance that Blacksburg's already passed a couple of years ago, knowing that we may be called on to assist Blacksburg, they may be called on to assist us. And it helps the community in that they have the same set of rules, basically to put it in plain terms. They know what to expect and what's allowed and what's not allowed. And if the rules don't change just because you cross from the north end of Christiansburg into the south end of Blacksburg, it allows for some consistency in dealing with that.
Yeah, it's important, it is, it is.
You're a very effective speaker.
Yes, yes.
Both in the workshop and tonight, and I appreciate, we're going to, hopefully we'll take action, but you've done, you and your group have done a great job on this and presenting it in the workshop as well. And it's, you know, it's potentially sensitive subjects, and you've handled it very well. I'm good at expressing it to you. Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Chief Sisson and I have talked several times about this, and I relayed to him and he relayed to me that we never want to have a situation that happened in Charlottesville. And we want to, and it's very doubtful something like that will happen here in Christiansburg, but to be prepared for something like that, I think is wonderful. And I would just like to thank you and, and Chief Sisson for all the work that you've done in this. And it...
in plain terms. They know what to expect, and what's allowed and what's not allowed. And if the rules don't change just because you cross from the north end of Christiansburg into the south end of Blacksburg, it allows for some consistency in dealing with that.
Yeah, it's important, it is, it is.
You're a very effective speaker.
Yes, yes.
Both in the workshop and tonight, and I appreciate, we're going to, hopefully we'll take action, but you've done, you and your group have done a great job on this and presenting it in the workshop as well. And it's, you know, it's potentially sensitive subjects, and you've handled it very well. I'm good at expressing it to you. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Chief Sisson and I have talked several times about this, and I relayed to him, and he relayed to me that we never want to have a situation that happened in Charlottesville. And we want to, and it's very doubtful something like that will happen here in Christiansburg, but to be prepared for something like that, I think is wonderful. And I would just like to thank you and Chief Sisson for all the work that you've done in this. And I think, I know it makes me feel a lot better, and if a situation came, ever came about, the whole town would be appreciative, too.
Thank you, Mr. Hubbard. Any other questions? Thank you. Major Ramsey.
(laughing).
Under the consent agenda?
Can I make a motion?
Yes, sir.
I want to go ahead and put on the table, I'm perfectly comfortable acting on all four items under public hearing tonight. If it's council's pleasure, I'll make a motion that we do that.
I'll second it. Motion in a second.
Do we not get your comment on the question?
You should allow still comments.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Well, I mean, I withdraw my motion.
I'll withdraw in a second.
And Mr. Wallace made a good point. If we haven't had a proper notification or a proper comment period.
That's what public hearings want.
Yeah.
Yep. I've seen a copy of this ordinance.
And your name and address, sir?
Chris Wallace, 1370 Ridge Street.
Thank you.
I'm questioning why it wasn't presented to everyone that was here tonight, the actual ordinance, just a couple of bullet points. And some of the things in there I had concerns. We should never be trying to limit free speech. And I can see how that ordinance, as written, could be abused to limit free speech of citizens by possibly requiring them to pay the police department to work overtime if you think that someone may not like what they have to say. And, you know, lots of people have lots of Republican things to say in this world. But as a veteran, one of the great things about America is we all get the right to make an ass out of ourselves in public, if we so desire, and say bad things. I just think that before you vote on it, you should present it to everybody at the meeting, let everybody see exactly what the whole ordinance entails.
We had a public work session on this.
It was in council, previous council packet.
Yeah, so it was out to, and we had several visitors, I think, at that meeting, so I think we did. Close enough. All right, thank you, Mr. Wallace.
I'll go ahead and make a, I'll respectfully, I'll respectfully regard that request and just recommend action on A, B, and C. We're not in, our hair's not on fire for any four of these, but if we have been asked to maybe delay action on that request, then I'll just, I'll make a motion that we act on items A, B, and C in our public hearing.
I'll second.
I'm ready for C. I could do A and B.
Then I'll revise it again.
You wait on C as well?
Sure.
Okay.
A and B, then. If council's pleasure, I'll make a motion that we act on items A and B tonight.
I'll second.
Okay, we'll have to do them individually.
Have a motion and a second.
And we'll add that to you.
Any discussion? Have we got any emails regarding item A? We do have something under mayor and council. I can make this B, C, B and C. We have A to approve the Safe Ride Program, and then we can vote on the other two under B and C.
Thank you.
All righty. Now, Madam Council?
Yes, sir.
Name of the matter, please.
No.
Councilman Collins?
I'm confused. What are we voting on?
Vote on A and Z.
A and B.
You can't vote on A and B.
It's got to be individually, though.
Yeah.
Yep.
This is just to move to.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Nay.
Councilman Stipes?
Good heavens.
I just think unless we're all, these public hearings sit there two weeks, and I do see.
I'm fine with that.
Same once more time with that, and I appreciate that.
I made the motion, but I don't want to make waves. If everyone's not uncomfortable, or if everyone's not comfortable, I'm fine waiting.
Two or three, three?
Yes.
I vote yes. So we'll vote on A and B tonight.
Okay.
Under our consent agenda, council meeting minutes of January seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, twenty-second, and twenty-ninth. Certification of Fire Department Officers, it was in your packet, I have a copy here, it's just the elected officers of the Fire Department. Contract for MBP for a PPA consulting services for former Truman Wilson Development as a part.
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. We got a motion and a second. Any discussions?
Yes, sir. Councilman Dishon?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Introductions and presentations. We have Dr. Noel Bissel of the New River Valley Health District to provide a health department program updates. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I have two specific programs that I really wanted to update you on. Both are very much surrounded by stigma. I'll tell you, we've been working at the Health Department with our community partners, with our outreach efforts to address them, but we're in the process now of elevating both of them, because I think it warrants that. The first one is sexually transmitted infections. It's obviously a difficult topic to talk about, but right now it is an urgent national public health problem, and our statistics here in the New River Valley mirror that. So it is a community problem here in the New River Valley. Right now, our data tells us that one in two sexually active adolescents and young adults will get an STI, which is a sexually transmitted infection, by the age of twenty-five. That's fifty percent. Most of them won't know it because they don't have any symptoms, and so they'll go on and spread the infections and not know it. For four consecutive years now, our numbers are skyrocketing. So this really is a problem. The United States needs industrialized nations in sexually transmitted infections, and that's really not something we want to be proud of. Nearly twenty million new infections are diagnosed annually in this country with a cost of sixteen billion dollars. I think part of it is we're victims of our own success with contraception, so people don't reach for condoms for birth control anymore because we have very effective birth control. And I think a lot of it is just our behaviors, and social media definitely plays into that as well. There are lots of websites for lookups and whatnot. Since two thousand thirteen, chlamydia has gone up twenty-two percent, gonorrhea has gone up sixty-seven percent, syphilis has gone up seventy-six percent, and congenital syphilis, where a mother transmits the infection to her unborn child, has gone up one hundred and fifty-four percent. The long-term consequences of these infections when they're undiagnosed are infertility, miscarriage, stillbirth, ectopic pregnancies, and increased risk of HIV and other infections because of the chronic inflammation that they induce. Most of them are curable, and all of them are treatable. HIV, for instance, is not curable, but it is treatable. It's now like a chronic disease as opposed to a death sentence that it was twenty-five years ago. We are worried, however, about drug-resistant gonorrhea. It hasn't presented itself in our area, but it is in other parts of the world, and with global travel, it's only a matter of time before it reaches us, too, just like the other things that we're worried about right now with measles, mumps, and other outbreaks that you see on the news every day. Global travel makes those very real problems that could affect us at any time. So we need to change the narrative, and we need to be able to talk about it. We've been addressing it with our partners, we've been addressing it with our clients, we've been addressing it with our Health Department outreach. But I did want to come to you, because you are going to see a much more pointed campaign. We've received funding, we started putting up billboards, we're putting out ads on the buses, we're doing media messages, we're doing digital marketing, basically appealing to this population, this very high-risk population that they need to get tested, because again, they don't know, so many of them don't know they have the disease. And the only way to curb this epidemic is to get people tested and get them treated. So we've started really marketing, and the billboards are up, so you might have seen some of the billboards. If not, you will start seeing them. The bus ads are going up on Friday. Digital marketing will start taking place as well. So I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware that this is happening and to engage you, because I think this is really a crisis that we really need to address a little bit more aggressively than we have. The second issue is another one that is surrounded by stigma, and that's addiction. We really have a problem looking at addiction for the medical issue that it is. Our society still tends to want to think of it as a moral failing, and it is a medical disease. And until we embrace that, we're going to have a hard time dealing with it. We need to treat it just like diabetes, lung disease, heart disease, or any other chronic illness. We partnered with New River Community Services on a campaign that the face of addiction is mine, meaning it could affect any one of us. And in fact, it does. It affects our brothers, our sisters, our mothers, our fathers, our friends, our neighbors, and our coworkers. Recent surveys are concerning because while most people in this country agree that there is a problem with addiction, and I do want to say it's addiction, everyone focuses on the opioids, but it's far more than opioids. There are other substances of abuse. While most people agree that there's a problem, most people are of the mindset that it's not my problem, it's not in my community, and it's not in my neighborhood, and that's absolutely not true. In fact, most people in this room probably know someone who's dealing with addiction right now. They may not know it, but they know someone who's dealing with addiction right now. If we look at substance use in general, tobacco, while smoking of combustible cigarettes is down, our e-cigarette use is going up, especially among our teens and our young adults. That is a gateway drug. Most people who use substances use more than one substance. I think everyone's probably heard of the popular Jules. The concern with the Jules is one Jule pod has just as much nicotine as a full pack of cigarettes, and some of these teens and adolescents are smoking multiple ones a day, so they're actually getting more nicotine than multiple packs of cigarettes a day. The other thing is that they're using Jules, and they're putting in marijuana. And today's marijuana is much more potent and purer than the marijuana of the sixties, and they're doing this in the schools, they're doing this in public places. It looks like a little card, a little flash drive, and they can just put it in their pocket. Methamphetamines on the rise. It's pure and it's cheap. We traditionally in this area have been more dependent on opioid pills. However, as access to those has gone down, as the Board of Medicine has cut back on prescribing those, people are transitioning to heroin. It's cheaper, it's purer, and it's very easily accessible. And we do have an injection drug use problem in our community. So we need to take a public health approach to this, and it's a challenge, and it's hard to face, it's hard to acknowledge, but the first steps are prevention, which is education, and we're really trying to do that. We're partnering with our community efforts, getting into the schools, getting to our young people, getting out there in every way we can. We're trying to develop a relationship of trust, because we're not going to get these folks the treatment and the help that they need without that trust. The second part is treatment. With that, it's mental health services and addiction services. And again, New River Community Services is doing a great job. They've hired peer recovery specialists to help. The hospitals are working on getting peer recovery specialists into the emergency rooms, so people come in with drug overdoses or substance use issues, there's a peer recovery person that they can engage right then and there, because we know that we have to engage them when they're there. If we let them leave, we've lost that opportunity. The other part of treatment is medication-assisted treatment. I know there's a lot of concern about diversion and other things with medication-assisted treatment, but the data shows that it works. It keeps people out of trouble with law enforcement, people hold down jobs, they have more stable housing, and they have more stable relationships. So we're really trying to engage our primary care providers, because we do not have enough providers in the New River Valley providing this life-saving treatment. And when people are on wait lists for months at a time, you lose the opportunity when they're ready to engage to get that treatment. The third component is what we call harm reduction. I think a lot of people are probably familiar with our efforts to get the training out there and naloxone. The Commission of Health in November of two thousand seventeen actually declared it a public health emergency, so naloxone is easily accessible. And to date, we've partnered with community services, we've partnered with local pharmacists and local groups, and we've probably expensed in this area alone five, six hundred doses of naloxone, which is wonderful. Our law enforcement, our EMS, we're getting everyone to carry it, so I think that's wonderful. Just to give you a little bit of perspective, in two thousand fifteen, the numbers showed that the cost of the addiction crisis was five hundred and four billion dollars. That's two-point-eight percent of our gross domestic product, and that's one year of what this has cost us. So clearly, we have to do more. The other part of harm reduction is a hard one. That's syringe exchange. That's for the people that are injecting drugs, to get them clean needles and syringes. It's part of engaging them for trust, it's part of getting them hooked up for treatment, and it's part of a public health crisis to decrease the spread of infectious disease from using dirty needles and syringes, to decrease the incidence of infections like cellulitis and abscesses, and to decrease endocarditis, which is an infection of heart valves that gets into the blood when they share these needles or use dirty needles. And people are now needing valve replacements, which cost hundreds of thousands to millions of dollars. We also want to decrease the overdose deaths. So this spring, sometime late this spring, in May or June, the New River Health District is going to be hosting an addiction symposium in conjunction with local partners, and we're going to bring, hopefully, lots of organizations to the table to discuss this, because we know it affects everybody. We do want to engage people from successful communities, communities who have successfully implemented these kinds of programs. And we have contacts in North Carolina, we have contacts in Kentucky, we have contacts here in the state of Virginia. So you will be seeing and hearing more about that, and we will probably be asking that you participate in this with us, so we can engage folks and just get it out there for discussion. So I just wanted to bring a few things to your attention, update you on those, and just let you know that these are coming, so that they aren't a shock, because they are surrounded by stigma. Thank you.
Can I ask you a few questions? The figures you quoted, are those New River Valley figures, the state figures, or country, or?
Which figures?
The figures about the sexually transmitted diseases.
So one in two sexually active young adults. Those are national statistics, but I can tell you that our numbers are very close to that. Our numbers pretty much follow those numbers.
Okay. Do we have a program that's presented presently in the school system?
So the school systems do teach a sexual health curriculum. One of the things we are doing is working to engage with our school systems. It's obviously a very touchy subject. The Board of Education, or the Department of Education in Virginia, still supports an abstinence-only curriculum, so it's challenging, because we know that abstinence-only isn't working. So we're trying to present, the curriculum that we really support is abstinence-based, but it's an evidence-based program. It's called Rights, Responsibilities, and Respect. And there is an institute called the Goodman Institute that studies comprehensive sexual education, and they have very good data published that when you do comprehensive sexual education versus abstinence-only type education, you actually delay beyond sexual activity longer, which is what we want. So we are trying to engage and see if we can meet in the middle on a compromise-type curriculum.
And what grade does this start in?
Most of the curriculum now start in elementary school, just talking about the parts of the body, they talk about being treated with respect, they talk about what's appropriate touching, such as hugging, what's not appropriate touching, such as genital manipulation, and then they go on about just respect for your body, and they talk about body parts. And then by the time, for instance, my daughter right now is in sixth grade at Blacksburg Middle School, and right now they are starting to talk about sexual abuse, sexual assault, and what that means. And I'm sure a lot of that has to do with the current climate, but by high school, they talk a lot more about sex, sexually transmitted infections, and pregnancy. I will note that, you know, we do have teen pregnancies, and the other thing that's very concerning is that even with great contraception, right now statistics show that one in two pregnancies in this country are unintended. So even with. So even with such great contraception options, we still have a lot of work to do to try and get contraception to our populations that don't have access.
And your efforts are wonderful. Thank you very much for what you do.
We're working on it. Some of them are challenging issues. I do want to update you. I appreciate the time. Thank you very much for your time, and you will be hearing from us about our symposium.
Dr. Wilson, thank you. You're very educated and fascinating. Harry brought up a great question for the schools. I see one of our school board members, Jamie Vaughn, right back in the back.
Hi, Jamie.
If you have in our event one another, probably a good idea to exchange info.
Yeah, we've been working with the school health advisory boards. It's hard.
Sometimes with schools, it's hard to do a lot because parents don't open their eyes.
Oh, absolutely.
You have to get your hands in the sand to a lot of addition, and what you're speaking about.
Absolutely. Lady Little, you can do that. I would say with that, that like the Good Mocca Institute looks at that as well, and I think the fear is a lot more than the actual concern on a lot of parents' part because it's in the media. So, you know, I think a lot of times we withhold things because we're afraid of how parents or how someone's going to react. And the curriculum is knocked out, is my correct?
And a lot of students that are young age get knocked out.
Yeah, the curriculum is knocked out, so it's not a mandatory curriculum.
That's right. If you still get the information, I'll take that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is our citizens' comments section where we allow citizens to come forward and express concerns, problems, issues, things on their minds. So anyone who would like to join the citizens' hearing, you're limited to three minutes. Ask you to come to the microphone and name an address, please, and we have three minutes. Anyone here to address council? Yes, sir?
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Congress members that are not members of Congress, I wish.
We wish, too.
I'm not sure I want to go any further than that.
I don't want to go any further than mayor, so I'm good.
We don't want to be state level either, by the way.
My name is Brandon Semmel. I live at 435 Oak Tree Boulevard. I just wanted to read a letter that I submitted to the Roadmap Times and had published this week. This city council meeting began with the Pledge of Allegiance in which all present affirmed our commitment to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On January 18th, however, this building, as well as many other government buildings across Virginia, were closed to commemorate Lee Jackson Day. January 21st, the doors remained closed for Martin Luther King Jr. Day. I ask if anyone fails to see the irony here. Generals Robert E. Lee and Thomas Stonewall Jackson chose to fight for the Confederate Constitution, which explicitly protected the right of property and Negro slaves, according to Article 1, Section 9, 4. Virginia's ordinance of secession reaffirmed this stance, bemoaning the oppression of the Southern slaveholding states as grounds for dividing the Union. As military leaders of this revolt, these men carried these words of unjust racial oppression squarely on their shoulders. Dr. King noted that African-Americans bear the burden of being the only group of immigrants to come to and live in cruel bondage on American soil against their will before being free to be stigmatized for their skin color. Must we add insult to injury by honoring men who fought and died to maintain the oppression of Americans? Worse, we honor these men at the same time we claim to honor a man killed for preaching the hope that one day this nation will rise up and live out the true meaning of its creed. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that we will transform the jangling discords of our nation into a beautiful symphony of brotherhood. So why do we set aside a day of government to honor men who so poorly represent the values to which our government pledges to align itself? Is our pledge to a united republic committed to liberty and justice for all empty words? As Americans, I believe we deserve better. I urge all administrative offices in Montgomery County to follow the lead of our public schools in de-recognizing Lee Jackson Day. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else here to address council? Yes, ma'am? You know the drill. You know the drill, Jamie.
Tony Vaughn, 2262 Pala, Christiansburg. I just wanted to clarify why I was here tonight, and I hope to be a lot more. First of the year, when our school board does our appointments for different committees, there wasn't really one that suited the needs for me. So I asked our board if we could have a liaison to the town councils, and I said I could be a liaison to this council. So I can't be here at every meeting, but I do hope to be here at some, and it was a fantastic night tonight, so thank you. So that's what I hope. Anytime you have something like that in regards to the schools, you know, just I would love to have all the information I can get because we've got a wonderful community, lots of great students, and that's how we can make it do if it's working together. So, thank you.
That's wonderful. Thanks, Jamie.
Thank you, Jamie. Jamie, do, a quick question. Do we have any of our school board representatives that reside in the town of Christiansburg?
Yeah, Ms. Parton does.
Kenny Franklin does, doesn't she?
And Ms. Parton also does.
Very good. I was trying to think of that the other day.
You know, I'm only five houses down.
Yeah, I know.
But, yeah, those two do, I believe.
Very good. Committee reports. Mr. Collins?
Yes, sir. I went by the rescue squad the other day to see the construction progress, and it looks good. When it gets finished, that's going to be a superb place, you know, for Christiansburg to be proud of.
Mr. Bishop?
I don't have.
Mr. Shawalter?
Done.
Mr. Stipes?
Brief, brief update. Earlier today, I attended my second meeting of the Virginia Tech Montgomery Executive Airport, of which we are one-fourth owners. And on the next agenda, I will be requesting an item for consideration. It's been, the authority has been there for a little over 20 years, I think, and the annual contribution has been, has remained the same at $50,000. And that is multiplied by a factor of 18.5, so it's almost several billion dollars that that's parlayed into. But anyway, bottom line is that $50,000 is the equivalent of $25,000 when they first started, so they are increasing the assessment, if you want to call it that, from $50,000 to $60,000. And so just to put council on notice, we'll be on the next agenda, and it'll be contingent. I will recommend that that'll be contingent on the other owners, which is Montgomery County, the town of Blacksburg, and Virginia Tech, to do that equal. But that money, and I'll talk more about it later, but that's a committee report, and we will be bringing that on the next agenda. Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Pepper?
The Aquatic Center Board had a meeting last week, and I thought some points were brought up that were of interest. And I think everybody knows that they have started a new pricing structure, a new fee structure, for people who want to swim at the Aquatic Center. And Terry Caldwell brought up the point that since this new structure has been put into effect, they have received 496 new memberships. And of those 496, 300 of them are town residents, and this has produced a revenue of around $15,000. I thought people might want to know that.
Thank you. Good numbers. Mr. Sax?
No.
Nothing from Central Business as of yet?
No, we have a meeting at the end of the month.
Okay. Very good. Discussion and action by mayor and council. The first item is the approval of the Safe Ride Program, Safe Ride Home Program for St. Patrick's Day, using one car for one night. It is March the 16th, a hooty ride at a cost of $300.
Actually, the Saturday before St. Patrick's Day.
It's what?
That's the Saturday before St. Patrick's Day.
Okay.
So that came out of Central Business for the, it was pretty successful for the New Year, so we wanted to do it again for St. Patrick's Day. Even if we keep one person off of the road, we find that to be a success, and the cost is extremely low, and the police department also supports it. So thanks, Chief, for that. So I'm requesting through Central Business for the approval of the $300.
Turn to motion.
That is a motion.
I second it.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sax?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Thank you. Item B is a conditional use permit request by Shaw Development LLC for residential development to consist of multifamily dwellings at a density of development not to exceed 20 dwelling units per acre on an approximately 5.7-acre property located 200, I'm sorry, 2,000 Sunset Drive Northeast. Tax map number is 436A-22A and 436A-42 in the B-3 General Business District. Do we have a motion to approve?
I was perfectly willing to wait two weeks, but if we're going to act on it tonight, I'll make a motion that we approve the, I don't want that to, I don't want that to take away from what I think is a good application. And I'll make a motion that we support the planning commission's recommendation and approve the issuance of a conditional use permit.
I'll second it. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Abstain.
You what?
Abstain.
Okay.
Councilman Collins?
Abstain.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sax?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
And a Q. That is 402. Next item is a conditional use permit request by Michael Abraham, agent for the Threshold Center LLC for a private recreational facility, a gym at 225 Industrial Drive Northeast. Tax map number is 500-A-5K and 5K1 in the I-2 General Industrial District. And I believe my notes, and this was approved by Planning Commission at 5, 1 and 3.
There's four conditions.
It's what?
There were four recommended conditions with this.
With the conditions.
Yes, sir.
We covered those earlier.
Can we hear those conditions?
Yes, sir. There should be no excessive noise between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. This permit shall be subject to inspections and approval of the facilities and equipment by the fire marshal and building official. The town of Christiansburg requires that the applicant shall use and maintain the facilities and equipment in accordance with the Equipment Manufacturers' guidelines. Number three, this permit shall be subject to review by the Planning Commission in one year. Number four, organized outdoor activities shall be limited.
Okay. I'll make, go ahead. No, I'm sorry. I'm going, I'll make a motion.
You got to comment first.
Well, can we get on?
Okay, go ahead.
Let's get the motion and second.
Make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit with the conditions that was submitted by Michael Abraham.
The property?
Yeah, the property.
Okay. Have a motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Comments?
Yes. Okay, this, a conditional use permit was originally brought to the table by two men that wanted to open up a gym, okay? They subsequently dropped out, okay? So the conditional use permit was brought on by the owner of the facility.
Okay.
Which, which I'm not sure, I mean, these guys, they checked and they said it's okay that you can, but I don't think it's right. My mind's, I don't think it's right to do that.
They do, they do what again?
The seller brought the, the people who were wanting to lease the property dropped out. They had already paid the $750 for the CUP, okay? So the people that, that were trying to get the CUP were gone, okay? So now the owner of the property wants to continue the CUP, but there's nobody to be in the property, you know?
So the Threshold Center has dropped out.
No, they didn't drop out.
The prospective candidate has dropped out.
Yeah.
But they're still pursuing the conditional use.
Wouldn't they have pursued that on behalf of Michael Abraham owner?
Well, either one can pursue it.
Sure. I mean.
Yes, with the property, property has owner permission, they can pursue it.
Okay.
Basically, that's the case. They're, I guess, apparently allowing Michael to continue even though they don't plan on pursuing it themselves. Once, once we expend the money, we don't refund it.
Right.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I wouldn't say anything, but I'm going to support this for two reasons. Number one, the last time we, we denied a use in the Threshold Center for a private club, and my primary reason for denying that, my personal reason for denying that was it didn't create jobs, which I think that our industrial centers should do. So the first reason I want to approve this is because we, we haven't done what we had set out to do in 18 months, which is to revisit our industrial park uses, which we're doing now. So I don't, you know, I don't want that lack of action on our part, a lack of follow-through on our part to hold back a reasonable application. And this particular request is one that results in if it's done correctly, or if it's done with intended use, will create jobs. So I'm going to support it for those two reasons.
Okay.
Can I ask a question about, you said controlling noise from sites such? What, what time is this, how long are the hours for this gym?
Well, there is, there is currently no prospective business, so that, that could vary depending on if, if there is a tenant that comes onboard, they, they might have varying hours. There's currently no set hours of operation.
But all, most all of it is contained to the inside of the building and, correct? Other than some, but after 10 o'clock at night, most likely, it's all going to be inside, I would, I would think.
Correct.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Yeah, and I'm going to support this. We've been, we've heard the word consistent several times tonight, but we have been consistent in our I-2 areas having gyms. And I'm not going to really talk about why I didn't support, well, I will say, I didn't support the I-2, and that was based on alcohol consumption, not production, and hard liquor consumption, especially in our I-2 districts. But I do agree with Mr. Stipes where I do think we need to look at it and come up with maybe some different reasoning for this, and take another look at that down the road.
All done? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
No.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sax?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That's 51. Thank you very much. Let me flip the page and get back to where we're going now. Staff reports. Town manager?
I had a request from Mark Manley. He's a local resident who is associated with a state falconry group. He says there's around 150 or so people in the state falconry group. He was asking about the potential for using our Wade Lane landfill property for hunting rabbits and squirrels. I told him that I guess my personal recommendation to council would be to not do it for simple liability reasons. You know, the fact that the hawks could get somebody's small poodle. I don't think it would really make our insurance go up, but I just told him, I guess, general, my personal feelings were I wouldn't recommend it, but I did feel obligated to bring the request to, if you would want to entertain that. It is a little bit of an economic development impact to the area. He says that it brings, I guess, generally between 25 to 40 people into the area to the falcon hunt. But I guess personally, I was thinking, let them try to steer to private property unless council tells me otherwise.
I'll ask the attorney if he signs a waiver on that or whatever. I mean, is there a reason, I mean, Mr. Wingfield, the reason for not doing it is obvious, but if he, if the person wants to accept responsible responsibility for his actions on the property, can that be that?
You can't sign a waiver ahead of time to insulate.
Indemnify the town or whatever.
Yeah, for personal injury. Now, you could get into some sort of indemnity agreement, whether or not the person has the wherewithal to actually indemnify, you know? You'd be stuck. You'd be stuck.
I'm not like.
There's insurance for anything. I mean, you could.
Well, what do you, yeah, yeah. We won't make a long discussion out of it, but.
Like I say, if I were to contact the insurance and tell them we were going to have the use, it wouldn't really make our insurance go up, but just kind of another liability that we don't have right now, that I didn't think we should necessarily take on for private purposes.
Yeah, I agree with Randy, for sure.
I would think that the, at best, we could come out with a black eye on this thing if, if someone's cat was swooped up somewhere out of the way.
One thing I did tell them is if they would want to look at properties, and they found this area simply because it's kind of a large wooded property, and I told them if they want to look in the area for other large wooded properties, a lot of times, the property owners aren't necessarily easy to identify, because they'll be in a corporation name or it'll be a PO box. So sometimes tracking down owners can be a little hard. I did offer to try to work with them in that regard, since I probably know contacts for most property owners in the area.
I think that was a pretty good decision on your part. I back on that. Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Also, we want to point out that Montgomery County Tourism Marketing Grant Program closes March 2nd, and that is the grant program that is funded partially through the town, both towns and the counties, tourism money through Montgomery County Tourism Development Council, and it is open to local businesses and nonprofits for tourism generating ideas. It's basically intended as seed startup money for, for those type initiatives. I'm just pointing it out, so, so you're aware. I'll include it in my weekly update to you, but that's.
Do we have that on, on our website or anything?
It's on the county's website.
Okay. All right.
Like I say, that, that closes March 2nd.
So local businesses are aware of this? Is that right, or they should be aware?
They should be, and that's, that's part of the reason I'm mentioning.
Uh-huh.
And Small Business Development Council has hired a person to represent the Neere Valley. Her name is Cheryl Tucker. She has three degrees from Virginia Tech, including accounting and finance, and a master's degree in marketing. Previous experience includes an accounting firm. She's a former CPA from the firm. She's also a former pharmaceutical rep, and she has a fair amount of small business experience. And like I say, she'll, she'll be on board shortly here in the Neere Valley.
Are we still supporting them?
Yes.
Okay, good. Yeah, he's, the development corporations provided him a free, free space over there just as a center, but he will come out into the.
Oh, I think we're providing space.
Yeah, we're going to, we're giving you space.
I think most, most of the localities have offered them space if they'd like to come to each individual locality.
Sounds good.
That's all I have.
Mr. Quinn?
No report.
Okay. Any other staff reports for tonight?
I just want to bring to the council's attention that the industrial district and the tour use changes that are proposed by the planning commission has been working on. We'll be wrapping those up with recommendations next week, and the Republican schedule for your next meeting on the 26th.
Okay. Okay. Any other council reports? We did kind of committee, and are there any other individual reports, Mr. Collins?
Is this a good time to read Why I Love Christiansburg?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay. The first week of, we started this thing called Why I Love Christiansburg, or Why I Love My Hometown, and you can go onto the Christiansburg.org website and complete one of these things. And we have one here from a person, but they didn't sign their name to it, which you can or you don't have to. It says, "I love how Christiansburg has changed in the nearly 20 years we've lived here. It has grown into a community that is interested in supporting its historic downtown and desires to offer cultural opportunities to the residents besides sports-related recreation." Another one says, "I love Christiansburg because of its proximity to the mountains, great school system, access to a major interstate, reasonable cost of the living, and access to what Blacksburg has to offer, the Huckleberry Trail, of course, and a progressive town council." In case you didn't hear that, and a progressive town council. And a progressive. Anyway, we like.
That's a sound, too, right?
Yeah, and that's written by Henry Shawalter. But we like to hear from you folks, you know, what you think about the town, seriously, you know? Anyway, thank you very much.
Perfect program, Eric.
Thanks, buddy.
Mr. Bishop?
I'll have it done.
Shawalter?
None.
Mr. Stipes?
None.
Well, the 15th and 16th of this month, which is Friday night and Saturday night, the, in cooperation with the museum and some other clubs, the museum is putting Hearts on Main, which is a two-day festival, music and art festival, to be held at the Great Roads Concert Hall. The first night, they have, oh, gosh, I didn't bring my flyer with me, but they have, they have two musical, they have one musical group, and then they have Scott Crawford, not Scott.
Scott Crawford, yeah.
Scott Crawford.
And then they have the dancers, the, a little leaper.
Okay. Anyway, tickets are $30 a person per night. Scott is, has been before the town, or the, the museum several times, and he is a, he does a real art history. He will take one particular picture, and he will delve into it for about an hour, hour and a half, to show you the insides and the outsides. And if, if you have not had a chance to see Scott, I would highly recommend that on Friday night. On Saturday night, they have another artist coming, and then the major band is the Loose Strings out of Galax, which is a, an all-female string group that are excellent. And I think appearing also on Saturday night, I want to say Saturday night, is Pat Moss, P. Buckley Moss, is coming as, and will be there for a while. And she is, we all know Pat is, is a really big artist, well-known artist, living here in the area. She told me two weeks ago she wants to move to Christiansburg as soon as she sells her house, so that'll be even better. I have been asked by the museum to emcee that program, and I have no idea yet. They haven't told me what, what I'm going to be doing, but I will be there, and I would encourage any of you that have not come to one of these on either night, I would highly suggest, it's a really good night's entertainment. They will have snacks available, and I think there is a cash bar both nights, starting around, I want to say 5:30, and the programs start at 7:00, so.
And all during the day, the art galleries and, and I think there's going to be quilts and different pieces of art that will be in there, you can look through, and this one there's no charge for that. I think it opens up around 10, goes 10 to 5:30.
Those things are sale.
I think, yeah.
I think, I think some of the vendors are at the sales. It's a really, and furthermore, if you have not been to Great Roads on Main since they converted the old Main Street Baptist Church, you owe yourself, if not to go to the concerts, but you owe yourself the pleasure of going to that facility and to see what's been done with it. For those of us that went there for many years, it's, it's a great change, and they've done real well. They've done a great job with it. Okay, other business, we have a closed meeting request, Mr. Huppert?
Request for a closed meeting in accordance with Code of Virginia 2.2-3711, parenthesis 3, for the discussion of, or consideration of the acquisition of real property for the public purpose, or of the disposition of the public-held real property, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position for the recognition strategy of the public body. The closed meeting pertains to discussion regarding to potential lease of the town-owned property at the address of 415 Cambray Street Northwest, as well as the purchase of a potential public works property in Montgomery County.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Yes, it is.
Second.
A motion and a second that we enter into closed session. Any comments? Hearing none. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sax?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That is 6-0. Thank you. We're going to take about a three, four-minute recess.
I move to certify that the town, town council of the town of Christiansburg, meeting in closed meeting, in the best of each member's knowledge, discuss only public business matters, lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements by the Virginia law, and only such matters as are identified in the resolution to enter into a closed meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sax?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That is 6-0. Thank you. And we are taking no action on, no official council action on anything we discussed. Prior to adjournment, Mr. Shawalter?
I, I just had, just a question for Randy. I meant to bring it up early before we went in. Is the brochure, the town brochure that has all the restaurants and things like that, I picked one up the other day, it was 2014, still had some restaurants that either closed or, has that been updated?
It has. Where did you pick up the old one?
Aquatic Center.
Okay.
Oh, Lord.
I just want to make sure we haven't updated any of the old stuff. Let's get rid of, because I know that there's a few restaurants that have opened, which deserve to be on there. You know, people come here, they, if I pick up a map, I want, and I go someplace, and it's not there anymore, I'm going to be pretty, you know, what, what use is it?
Well, I think the option of this thing is when, and I, we have several people delivering them, is just instruct them, when they, when they bring those, they pick up all the other ones they have, and it's easiest way to get them. Bring them back, we can shred them, or recycle them, or do whatever. Anything else to come before council?